You are watching a Fact TV presentation of the town of Swansea.
I will call to order the February 8th meeting of the Swansea Planning Board here at Wickham Hall.
Recording in progress.
And I will begin with the roll call. Scott Zeltz, that's me, I'm here. Richard Lane.
Here.
Jane Johnson.
Here.
Brandon Self.
Here.
Michael York.
Here.
Victoria Ames.
Here.
Slifman's Rep Ken, I mean, not Ken, Slifman Peresensky.
Yeah.
Uh, alternate Steve Malone, not here. Michael Scungeo, alternate, is not here. Alternate Brian Vertigal is not here. And we have a full board, so we wouldn't be seeing any of those guys anyway. So, bringing us to the agenda. And the agenda this evening is the approval of minutes of January 25th, 2024. And under discussions and other business, we have a discussion with the Energy Commission discussion, uh, impact fees discussion, and other businesses may be requiring, we'll be discussing policy, site plan review regulations there, and anything else we need to discuss. So, bringing up to the beginning, we don't need a regional impact case, nothing, I mean, not the regional impact, uh, motion, because there's nothing near that requires regional impact. So, we'll skip that. And we'll go to the approval of minutes, January 25th, 2024. And we have a motion to approve those minutes.
So moved.
Motion by Richard to approve it, seconded by Michael York. Then is there any further discussion, changes, or anything like that to the minutes?
I have a question.
Okay.
We talked about, um, getting legal counsel on an issue, did we?
Uh, I don't know yet. We'll, we'll see that in other discussions and see if we did that. I'm not sure, but we, we're gonna discuss that tonight anyways, part of the site plan regs. Okay, if there's nothing else, then all those in favor of approving the January 25th minutes? Say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all those votes? Okay. Alright, that brings us to our first order of business, is a Energy Commission discussion.
Hello?
Hi.
Can we come sit up here?
Sure.
It's right out there so we can see. It is violating, you sit back there. You can come up to the table, but sit back there where we can all see it.
Oh geez. Feel like a second-class citizen. There's three of us here from the Energy Commission, I'm Bob, I'm Dad, I'm the chairman.
Okay.
We just, you know, we just kinda wanted to talk to you guys what we've, what we've been doing. And maybe look towards the future, without maybe looking at the zoning ordinance to see how we can make the town more energy resilient and independent. And we had a little bit of a discussion about EV chargers at one of your recent meetings. You know, we're here as a resource, we've been doing a lot of research on power and what it takes, you know, in a small community like this, so we kinda wanna offer our insight, if you ever need it, but we also would love to work with you guys on any zoning ordinances as well.
Anything come to mind?
Let me grab my notes. I don't know if you guys have anything you wanna add? No? Well, listen, they were about the EV chargers being, needing a variance. We would love to see them be acceptable uses.
We'll see how that vote goes in March.
Yeah.
Starting point, anyway.
Yeah, but we realize that you guys have a lot on your plate, you know, with a lot of the development that's been going on in town. The, uh, we wanna make the town as EV-friendly as possible.
And meaning, other than charging stations, what else?
Charging, you know, charging stations mainly is the biggest thing, but we're also, we're also wondering, what statutory authority does the town have to require developers to put in like, infrastructure, renewable infrastructure, when they come in and put 200 units in? Is there a requirement that they put in infrastructure for charging units? Can we require?
Not at this point. I believe the town could require it. We'd have to check with our legal counsel, obviously, with that, but I think the town could require that.
Is that, is there something in the stat, statutory language that says we could require that? Is, you know, that's one thing I'm, I'm not too clear on, is where would we go to, to refer to that language?
Probably have to check with our attorney first to see if and when we could do it, and then have to have a discussion on that, whether, you know, if, if you have to force somebody to do something, then it probably isn't what they wanna do. You know, that's, we've discussed that before, about requiring, you know, the certain levels of EV stations at different businesses or permanent complexes. And our stance mainly was just waiting to see if there's a big call for it. You know, and if there is something like that, then if it makes sense for the developer to do it, then they'll do it.
Was there, was there a discussion with the developers about EV charging infrastructure?
I don't believe so. Anybody else remember any discussion?
It wasn't really brought up.
It's never been brought up yet, you know, it's, we'll see as it comes around.
Well, we would think it would beho, behoove someone who's putting in 200 units to have some sort of infrastructure.
And if it did, I'm sure they bring it up to the meeting, and, and I'm sure the Planning Board wouldn't have a problem with it.
Well, that's part, that would be, that would be allowed under the statutory language, right, anyways?
In the business.
In a complex like that.
Yeah.
Yeah. But then there was the whole issue about, you know, having to need a variance, but you said we're gonna work on that, so, um. We did the community power plan, we hope everyone's kinda, was kinda happy with that. I hope everybody switched to Eversource, though, for the next six months. If it's three cents cheaper.
Meaning back from there, yeah. I never switched to begin with, actually, I just stayed with Eversource.
So, yeah, so, but we want you to realize, too, that Eversource got lucky, and their rate's gonna go back up in six months.
I don't know if they really got lucky, but it was, they, they were kinda pulled out of the loop. They're restricted to, to doing their.
Like three days.
That's it.
Yeah.
And whatever the market is there, they're stuck with it. The guys that you were talking about, or that setup here, they had a big advantage over them. They could, they could go on the market anytime they wanted.
Yeah.
And, and secure those prices, though. That's pretty unfair, in my opinion.
Well, we're pretty happy that we got a fixed rate for the next three years.
Yeah, yeah.
For the town and everything.
Even though it's higher than Eversource is now, though, right?
Well, yeah, but you know, it's a, it's a levelized cost.
Yeah.
It's gonna stay the same for three years. You can't say that forever, Source. I mean, they hit 22 cents last winter. So, that was really the major impetus to doing community power, was when that price skyrocketed, so.
That whole green aspect of it, right?
Well, and, yes, and you don't get the same, you know, consumers can choose renewables, anywhere from 20, 30, all the way up to 100%, but we're not forcing that on anybody. So, um, we, we were happy with the way that rolled out. You, you know about the sewer plant, right? About the solar there and the grants we're getting, because that's all part of.
Half a million dollars worth, boy, that's, that's a pretty big price tag for a small area like that, I would say, anyway.
You realize we're only spending $80,000 in the town, though.
I do, yeah, I know how the grants, things work, you know, the, the engineering prices for things have a strange way of coming out to what the grants total, you know? So, that's how those things kinda work.
You know, I just say the money, the money's there, we should figure out a way to use it, because somebody's gonna spend it. And, and we also know that in two and a half years, that $80,000 town investment's gonna be paid off with the money we save at the plant. So, that's, you know, that's very, that's, that's good, right? Who the heck knows what's happening with Solar Garden? You guys, you know?
I don't know.
Yeah. You know, they wanted to sell power to us, and the Energy Commission was like, we don't like that, they want us to sign a 21-year contract, and we didn't like that, we thought seven years would be enough, seven to 10 years.
Most likely it's a money hole up, grants, something like that.
Yeah.
But we figured a better deal would, would definitely come along.
Yeah. Well, it's not feasible without the grants, anyway, so, yeah, if they don't get the grants, you're not gonna do it.
I don't know how they, I don't know how somebody like Solar Garden planned to finance their project, to be honest.
I know, but it probably wasn't out of their own pocket, not too much.
So, we, we also, the town also joined Clean Energy New Hampshire, which is an organization that advocates on energy policy. So, they're the people that can tell us where, where grants are available and what's going on in the legislature. And they come in, they brief us at every Energy Commission meeting and let us know what's going on. We also get emails from our federal delegation telling us about where all this money's coming from, where it's going, what's available. And that's something that Clean Energy New Hampshire can help us, um, figure out, if we could get some funds, especially for places like our mobile home parks, which are reduced income areas, they can get grants for renewable energies. So, all this stuff, they still ironing out rules for all this stuff, but that's all the sort of stuff we're looking at. And, one question I had, and I hadn't brought this up with the Energy Commission, because it's a crazy idea I've been thinking about, but... So, typical rooftop arrays, 45 to 60 kilowatts an hour, they plug right into the grid wherever you're at. Anytime you go over a certain amount, it's gotta have a distribution point, like, uh, over here, to plug into. Could a town like Swansea, and I don't know if you know this answer, any of you, but could a town like Swansea start a co-op and distribute its energy with houses and businesses in the town, where everyone puts solar panels on their house, but they were a member of the co-op? I don't know if something that's, if that's possible, that's probably something that has to go through the Public Utilities Commission.
I would certainly think it'd have to go through that, and there'd be an awful lot of, uh, maintenance issues to, to work out. Who's gonna take care of that system? Eversource has that, uh, they take care of all the distribution now. I would assume they would do it with something like that.
Yeah.
Still, where would the co-op fit in?
Yeah, the co-op would have to have some kind of organization, you know, two or three people on staff.
Because they'd be feeding back into the grid all the time.
Yeah.
All the time they're generating, night and night, it wouldn't be feeding back anything now, but feeding back all the time, so that's the reverse part of the meter, you know, they, they, they do the math as to what they produce and what they use, and the rest is what they're...
And if the co-op had energy storage, had a battery in every basement, you would be feeding electricity in when the sun's down, so.
Possibly, I think we're a long ways from that, though.
I just think it's, you know, I like to think big and grand. I know you guys are boot boots on the ground, you're interpreting the ordinances and doing, you know, what you need to do. We kinda wanna imagine a little bit out of the box.
So, if it were a battery thing, the batteries would be a, be a planning board issue with the business, but not with homes.
Right.
We'd have nothing to do with that.
And because that, yeah, it, because that you can have solar panels in Swansea, it's not, the question is, how could we do it as a co-op and help people, you know, to put solar panels on their homes, if that's what they wanna do and they can't necessarily afford?
And would it work? You know, that's the other question, yeah. And affording it, if there are grants available, because it still isn't to the point where a homeowner can just shell out that kinda money on his rooftop and expect to get a return right off the bat.
There's a lot of scams out there, and we, we try to, we try to warn people to be careful about when they get into it. We, we've seen a lot of solar panels flying up on roofs.
A lot of companies coming, what, from out of state or something, coming in?
Well, you know, and there's some good deals and there's some nah. I mean, you know, you could talk to people about leases or out-and-out purchases. It's really confusing for some people, so we kinda wanna be there as a resource for people, if we can help as well. There, there are some very honest solar installers out there, but you gotta be careful, because they're gonna get you in a deal you don't wanna be in for 20 years, so.
I have a question, though. So, uh, if, if we, the commission, the Energy Commission, are considering a solar array system for the town, and we, and we're looking at town-owned property, do we need, what, what, what approval do we need from your group?
Depends who owns the property.
Or how do we interact with your group in order to try to make a project like that happen?
It depends who owns the property, but if it's a private property, which it sounds like it probably would be, then it would just get regular site plan approval right here at the site, uh, Planning Board.
What if it's town?
Yeah, we're also looking at town-owned property.
If the town owns a property, then usually it, it comes through here, but nothing is binding or restricting from the Planning Board.
Okay. So, the municipality can pretty much do what they need to do?
Usually, yeah.
Yeah.
Well, we're similar, but we are not.
Schools, you got, same way with schools, right?
Yeah.
They, they come here, they're formal.
We try not to do it that way, though. We really, we really take our presentation in front of the Planning Board seriously, because I'm pretty adamant that if everybody else has to deal with it, then so should we. I don't, I'm not a big fan of government exempting themselves from the rules that they go to enforce on us.
Not saying you should.
So, Mike, you're not against putting an array on public property, you're just saying treat that the same.
Yeah, I just, yeah, I just, I just, I agree with you, where the government can do whatever they want, we try to believe our government, we buy that.
Yep, I agree, Mike.
Yep, okay, good.
So, mainly it's solar we're talking about, no windmills or?
Well, you know, I, I don't know for a fact, but most people can put a mini turbine on their house if they want a windmill, as long as it's not over a certain height, I believe. Um, I don't think there's many restrictions on that, except, you know, of course, you probably wanna get a real electrician to hook it all up for you. I mean, there's things like that, you know?
Probably.
But, I mean.
You might wanna be on a hill.
There's some amazing wind turbine technology out there that you don't even need a lot of wind to, and it would pipe it right into your battery. You know, we're looking at maybe getting a couple of small wind turbines on our property, because we have an EV, and I would love to charge it that way as well. But the first thing to do is to get a windbeater on the house, to see if it's feasible.
Yeah, you know, cost-effective or not.
I mean, there's no real hydro, right, in this area, so?
Not enough elevation for that?
Most of it, most of it is, you know, we don't, we definitely don't wanna see wind farms in this area. We love our ridges, we, that's not something the Energy Commission would even consider, you know, but, you know, micro, micro wind turbines and things that people are putting up on their lawn or on their roof? Sure. Anything that builds resilience and produces energy locally is great for our community, we believe, so.
So, it's mainly solar, then, we're talking about?
Yeah.
And mainly, anything to do with the zoning ordinance would be placement of such, basically.
And EV charging station infrastructure, especially along the 12 and 10, you know, main core.
Yeah.
And it's not a big burden for someone to come back and get a variance for an EV charger, but if we can eliminate one step?
Yeah, yeah, I'm all for that. I'm not for forcing people to do it. I'm not for mandating it in the, in the ordinance that you have to have so many EV chargers if you have a parking lot.
Yeah, well, they do that in Vermont now, with all new construction, where they have to put in a certain amount of EV chargers.
Yeah, well, I don't think we're there yet.
I don't, I don't think it will, either. I think any businesses looking at it, whether it's Market Basket, or the guy building 200 units up here, I mean, you're missing a key demographic if you're not having that convenience on site.
Yeah, and if it makes sense to him, Mike?
The co-op's EV chargers, very nice.
Yes, I've been using them.
It's also $300,000.
Yeah, and it's expensive.
They charge five times the amount per kilowatt.
So, you know. 55 cents a kilowatt hour charge.
It's, it's, and I'm only saying that because the, the, the mass, the mass use of them is still, you know, economically infeasible. It's not like we're gonna have a, a canopy with six chargers that, that total grant total of $1.8 million at this time, or anything like that. But, yeah, the dealerships are gonna be mandated to put them in to keep their dealership. What's gonna happen? They'll come in, and, um, you know, we've got some commercial properties that have very large arrays, 500, 600,000 dollars to, um, for their own personal defraying of expenses, and they're probably gonna wanna come in and talk at some point, they'd like to talk to the board on that, but they're gonna wanna talk about, you know, trying to figure out a way to help with taxes on that, too.
Yeah.
Highlights or whatever else, but, but anyway, yeah, that, it's so, so far, it's very, 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 very expensive.
Do you mind if I put a couple up in front of your place?
They got one.
They had a couple for, they had a couple for quite a while, and those are, those are much, 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 much cheaper, much simpler.
Those are Level 2 chargers?
Yeah, they take forever.
15?
Yeah.
You get 15% an hour on a Level 2 charger?
The, the big problem, the big problem with them, according to my Eversource engineer, which, which I believe, because I was asking them, you know, with the houses, like, how is that, how you guys doing, have these houses hurting you guys? He said, "No, it's not worried about houses." And so, he's worried about fast chargers. He goes, "The amount of energy that they consume so quickly," he says, "It's not, our grid really can't deal with that right now." He said, "We're having a hard time with it." And I said, "So, you're gonna have to look at point of source generation?" He said, "Totally 100%, we're gonna have to look at point of source generation, which means the dealerships and the rest of them." And Manatok4 did put on solar panels, and the rest of them will be doing some sort of onsite generation to help offset it, because the grid isn't gonna be able to take a line of 12 fast charging EV chargers and use at once. And that's kinda the, what they're up against at this time.
Yeah, and any ideas to, uh, what a solar array would look like to run, say, five of those chargers?
I couldn't even, I couldn't even, couldn't even imagine.
I'm just wondering if that's what they have?
It's impossible, quite frankly.
We could find it, oh, sure.
I think, I think, I think it, like, the only advantage you get in all so far that I've seen is to have some rearview mirror. I never guessed I would have owned something like this in my life, and what this can do. Whatever the EV charger, the technology is today, it's kind of irrelevant for what it's gonna be in two years, and three years, and four years. It's gonna change, there's no way around it, it's gonna have to change, quite frankly.
But a kilowatt is a kilowatt. I mean, you can't get around that.
No question.
And what it takes to generate that is the same amount it took 30 years ago to generate it.
There's, there's absolutely.
Just more efficiency, efficiency is at that.
Right, there's absolutely no, no question about that. You're 100% correct. But it's gonna be curious to see what they're able to.
Yeah, yeah.
Knowing that.
They come with the battery part of it there, that's, I guess that's the next thing they'd have to do.
Onboard generation, who knows what?
Hydrogen cells.
Hydrogen cells are definitely making a comeback. They cut it out of the way, and now they're coming back, right?
Yeah.
There's somebody losses in transmission, right? So that it's almost gonna guarantee.
Right.
An increase in onsite generation.
I think the most interesting thing to keep in mind is, is like, like, most great technology with advances unfortunately come from our desire to kill people. Um, the Pentagon is investing tons and tons and tons into this. Between the Iraq and Afghanistan wars, over half the people lost, half the soldiers lost, the loss of delivery of fuel.
No kidding, really?
Which, that's a fact. 60% for one more, 40% for the other. So, that averages out a half of the loss transporting fuel. And that is not new to war. I mean, it's cut off, the, the supply is an old technique. And we have things like the Seaweed submarine, which when you think about it technologically is absolute miracle. And the Pentagon is spending probably more money than anybody right now on alternative fuels for that purpose.
I think onsite generation is kind of where we're, you know, where we'd eventually wanna be 20, 50, or 100 years from now.
Again, with solar?
Yeah, well, I mean, you know, who knows how, like, like said, who knows how things change? You know, technology doesn't stand still. But solar, right now, is, you know, just, yeah, it's on, it's on the leading edge, and it gets cheaper all the time, so. I mean, if we're gonna, if, if we're gonna regionalize or centralize our energy production, I don't know any other way to do that. I mean, they don't have mini nukes that we can put in each community. It seems like solar power is the way to localize your energy. The technology's gonna change, you know, we have no idea, like Mike says. Our phones have more computing power than the Apollo 11 had, so, it's just amazing. But I, we appreciate the time, and we appreciate being able to just talk.
Yeah, we appreciate the input, and for sure, if you see something that needs to, or you think needs to be put into our zoning, let us know before we start discussing zoning, so we can, uh...
Yeah, is there an official process, a timeline for when you start for next town meeting? Are you, do you have things on your plate for zoning ordinance amendments and changes?
Not right now, we've already gone through that, time, timeframe is up, so, you know, come in in the middle of the summer, give us enough time.
You could take a break for a while.
I have a couple questions. Um, number one is, um, you talked about that, that your committee serves as a clearinghouse for helping people find reputable installers?
Well, no, we don't, we won't do that.
You don't do that?
We help people, we discuss with them what to look for. We can tell them what to look for, but I would not recommend it.
Okay. So, but I didn't know that you did that. So, I, and that, that to me, you know, if I'm looking to put in a solar array, I would come and talk to you, but, but now, now I know that I can. So, I wonder if you're making that, making the public aware of that, like in the newsletter or the annual report or something?
We have the, the annual report has, basically says we want you to come talk to us. We are in the Swansea uncovered every, what, two months it comes out, or every four months when it comes out, so we try to let folks know.
We've talked about, um, coming up with like a webpage or something for the town website that just has some information about where to learn more about the, um, the IRA.
Inflation.
Rebates and credits and things like that. And I actually just, I'm about to schedule a, um, energy audit, this is, so my way of learning about all this, so I can share it, is I just scheduled an energy audit for our 220-year-old house, and we're gonna go through the process, I hope, over the next year.
Just walk around with candles to see where the drafts are?
Yeah, that's one way to do it. But anyway, you know, I tried to, I'd like to, to write about that and have that information and that sort of experience, um, available to the town. So, we've talked about ways to, to deliver that.
We do have a small budget, so we would like to develop some sort of mailers to go to everyone, and, you know, give them some websites and some resources and things like that.
The website is nice, the town website, because it's permanent, you know? I'm not gonna lose it after I stick it on my refrigerator for a while.
We have a lot of people in Swansea, too, that are doing interesting things. We've had one guy, I mean, trying to get, come in, who, you know, did a ground-mounted array on his own, just so he could charge his Tesla out on Flatland Mill Road. I think that was legal, right?
Sure.
But I would love, like, people like him, I would like to get in, you know, just to pick his brain, and, because that's sort of, you know, backyard project anybody can do, if they're interested. And I'd love to know how much it cost him, but now, you know, outside of the cost for the array, he's not paying to charge his car anywhere, which is pretty neat, so.
So, the second thing I was, I was thinking about, we're talking about zoning, you know, being involved in the zoning process, but if there's anything that comes up that would be appropriate to amend our site plan review regulations, I think that would be useful for us to know, if you've got some recommendations on how to accommodate charging stations on site plans.
I think we have some ideas, yeah.
And, you know, we're talking with other towns, I'm sure you'll be doing that.
Yeah. I would love to, I think that's something that we should do, is review all the, all the zoning ordinance, the site plan review and all that, and see maybe if there's suggestions we can make. I haven't really dived too deep into that stuff.
Well, John Condo's from Clean Energy New Hampshire, he's been a really good advisor, and he's somebody who's a resource, like you, you discussed, in terms of, you know, language to help a town sort of get ahead of some of these things, and, you know, you wanna.
And having a membership in Clean Energy New Hampshire means we could ask John to sit down with us, and let's go over the site plan review process.
Great.
And see if there's things we can do better.
Wonderful, thank you.
And again, like Scott said, we don't wanna mandate, but we wanna make it amenable to EV infrastructure and renewables, so.
Yeah, great.
Swansea's changed, and Swansea's growing. You guys probably hear it all the time. Appreciate the work you do.
We hear it from both ends.[1583.04]
Yeah, I appreciate the work you do, and I know that what you do, you guys are following, you know, the letter of the ordinances, and that's important, and I wish more people understood that. You know, you can only do what's in the book, so to speak, so.
We, we pass it along every chance we get.
And, and, you know, one thing that, one thing outside of the Energy Commission is, you know, wondering what, what the impact of developing multi-units has on our school district budget. I think that's something that I would love to look at. Is that something that you can ask? When they come in with two hundred units, do you ask them what the impact is on the schools?
We can, we have before, we don't have, we're gonna be discussing impact fees tonight as a matter of fact, but we don't have impact fees in this town.
Well, I don't, you know, and I don't, I'm not sure I like impact fees myself, because it's really not a steady source of income. It's a one-time payment usually, right? I'm just more interested, if someone comes in with two hundred units, are they bringing fifty kids into the school system? What does that do to the?
We've had one project that we got that information from, the Finley project over on Stafford Drive. They went with Manatok, and they gave us a feedback. They also gave us a financial statement of, about approximately what they think everything's gonna come down to. And they're talking about ten kids.
That's not bad.
But they did go with the school board. It's, it's hard to say, but that, that is a market rate and those apartments are gonna be very expensive.
Well, we got eighty-four units here.
Right, but I don't, I don't believe there's gonna be a lot of kids in there, mainly because it's one and two bedrooms mostly. And what, we say, like, twelve.
Of the five hundred, of the five, roughly five hundred that have been approved for fall home welfare measure?
Yeah.
Well, you know, and that's just, you know, as a member of the school board budget committee, I'm always concerned. When you say five hundred new units, does that mean five hundred new kids? You know?
And you know, as a member of the budget committee, you're seven percent under the rule right now.
Yep, well, the school has told us that they have room. So that's what we've been told by the school board, but I'm sure that people still.
You would have the room, and everything works about sufficiency when it's maxed out?
When you have more students, it's better.
But we, we can ask projects when I come in if they're allowed to scope. We can ask them for a financial statement, and kids and stuff like that.
I don't have anything.
And that's part of the impact fee thing, is that if they're gonna come in and we know that they're gonna be an increase in children, the impact fee would help offset any infrastructure, or if you had to build a school bigger, let's say, then those fees could be used for that purpose.
They have to be.
Right, they have to be, yes. We have to set up accounts.
Yes, very specific.
The first thing we had to do, and we do have it already, is the CIPC program, the Capital Improvement Committee. That's the first thing we have to have established before we can do impact fees, which we have that already. And then we have to look at how we're gonna structure those fees.
Does the state have limits on impact fees? What's the, how, do you have?
They don't limit the amount. No, they don't limit the amount. They have guidelines on, you have to have set up certain accounts and that has to go, they cannot go to the general fund. It has to go to certain counts. Like, like on Sanford Drive there, that, they, they gave us some money to help redo Sanford Drive. Okay, that money has to go for those road improvements. And we had an.
That was not an impact fee though.
It's not an impact fee, it's an agreed to fee.
And we can do that, and we have done that with developers. Rather than having impact fees, they have agreed to do certain things, fix this or that intersection or something like that, yeah, Market Basket, they've, they've done that, so, in lieu of impact fees.
We actually did get some money from the state for this development over here. We got eight hundred and forty thousand dollars.
Ten thousand dollars in the end.
Yeah. So that, that I believe could go to the general fund, correct?
You can do town, you can do whatever you want.
Because that's state money, that's state money, that's not impact fees.
Yeah.
Well, it's not, where's it going? It's, it's being used like fund balance money.
Yeah, that's, they, they, SLCC did have a public hearing on that, which they were required to do.
I think something's going over here to Winchester. Does that sound right?
California.
Sorry?
The California Street, Winchester Street.
Road.
Road, and this and some of that.
The money from the apartments over here from the state.
I, I, I'm gonna, do you hear that, or you?
I've seen it in different places.
I thought it was designated strictly for infrastructure work.
It's all infrastructure, right? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, we would like some public input when we do this. We're just starting discussions on it. Public input would be great, what they think about it.
I wanna know, if we're moved on to impact fees, I do have some questions.
Sam, let's hear them. I mean, we're gonna be.
It's on our agenda for tonight.
Well, does it, I mean, does, is it, something has to be written into the town ordinance to?
It has to be a separate ordinance by itself.
And so we don't have that right now, so you can't require an impact fee. But you can ask them to say, this road needs work. Would you, would you be willing to fix it? What if they said no?
They usually say yes. If they said no, then they say no, and we give them a hard time, and, you know.
So do you have proposed language for impact fees? Is that, or are you just sort of just ground level?
We're just talking, we've, we've discussed it throughout the years.
This is something we want to do, why now then?
Institute it, and we're gonna discuss again tonight, just, Mike wanna bring it up, so we're gonna discuss.
You know, that was my, just my big question. What's the step, again, statute or authority for the town to be able to do that?
RSA gives us the authority.
Yeah, the RSA is.
You have to have it in your zoning ordinance.
We have to have a separate impact fee ordinance.
Okay.
Right.
And that's, that would be in the zoning ordinance.
It's presented two seven four, colon, twenty-one B.
Six, six seven.
Seventy-four, yeah.
Six seventy-four, yeah.
So that would potentially be something that would be on the law next year, to approve an amendment to require impact fees, if, if you decide.
Yeah, it depends on how everything goes with discussing it and.
I'd love to hear what you guys have to say about impact fees.
I think there's a lot of bookkeeping that goes along with it as well, so we have to discuss it probably.
What kind of percentage? Is there like a percentage? Is there an algorithm that you would use?
I think it's whatever the, what the town itself comes up with, as to how much it charges for what.
Wow.
And it's a couple of different ways you can do it. You can do it by square footage.
But it, it has to, I think the town has to show that their project is gonna impact that specific thing. It can't just be that, like, Mike brought up, that the school system is seven percent under. We'd probably have a hard time charging an impact fee when the school system is a little bit low like that. So, you have to show that you can, you have a spot for it, and you have to use it within, I think, six years, or you have to give it back.
Well, could you, I mean, if, could you require like a new fire truck?
No, you can't. You can inquire.
You can put in the capital reserve for the fire cars.
Yes. But again, if it's not used in six years, you have to give it back.
It's gotta be used in six years, correct?
You don't just make sure it's used.
Well, what's the idea for impact fees then? What are you, what are you all thinking? What, what would you use the money for? And why would you ask for it in the first place?
The money would be used for specific things, like if it were, if there needed to be a road improvement for that project going in there, drainage issues, things like that, that it was gonna affect, and that the town could show that this project was gonna put more strain on that, and it was gonna affect the surrounding properties, then you could charge them the impact fee for that. School system is the other thing, water, you know, water and sewer is the other thing. If you can show that their, their project is gonna impact the plant. It can't be used for general upgrades to the plant. It's gotta be used for whatever specifically that project is gonna do.
Right now, we have a, a water problem here in West Swansea where a project's coming in. It's very difficult for them to hook up to the water system. So if you've got a ma, a project coming in, you say, okay, we gotta improve the water, so we can put a fire suspension system in and all this other stuff, then you could charge fees for that.
Yeah, you should please.
So far, that's a private system though. You can't charge it for the private system. The town would have to own it.
The private system, yeah, no. Would have to own that system.
Town would have to own that water system to be charging impact fees.
Which, it looks like we're headed that way almost.
Might be.
Yeah.
So you can't just use the money on anything. You can't just throw it in the general fund. It has to be designated.
Can't go in a general fund by statute.
So I think we've moved on to impact fees. So, Mike, do you wanna bring on?
Well, you know, I, I, I talked, I talked with a couple of, the SLCC is only two really active right now, and they asked me to bring it up. And I agree, though, I think we're actually past the time we should have, we could have had, we could have had some money for infrastructure, like on the Finley project. We got voluntary money from that one, and that was good. It did help with Sanford Drive. But I think we need, need it basically, okay, it's, town's gonna grow. There's a lot of people in town don't want the town to grow, but it's gonna grow. You know, pressure's gonna put us on us to grow. And I think we need to have something in place for the improvements that we'll need to do, like sewage and water. You know, it's gonna have to be extended eventually. And we talked once here about extending sewage all the way from Market Basket down through.
Sewer, what are you talking about?
Sewer, right.
From Market Basket down to there, really?
Then we talked, discussed that one time.
It might have been water, maybe. I don't know, yeah, but anyways.
Well, whichever one it was, if we owned the water, or we aren't, because we own the sewer, then we could have fees to help do that when somebody wanted to come in, and if, say, yeah, Forrest wanted to, like we talked about, them possibly selling off lots out from the side of the road down through, and we could get businesses in there to help the town out. And then you would have a way to get some infrastructure done and paid for, because fees could be used for that. Don't know how long.
It's, you know, again, there's that six-year limit on using those impact fees.
That's correct.
And, and you have to show that it's affecting that portion of whatever you're trying to fix up.
That's correct, that is correct.
Tax increment, increment zones like we have over here in, in the industrial park are probably more fitting for something like a project that size, that you're talking about, down Route ten or something.
Yeah.
But yeah, the impact fees, I don't know, it's, in one way, it's a big headache, I think. If the developers are willing to pitch in to whatever they're, like, these guys up here with the road and sewer extensions or however, if they're still willing to pitch in for stuff like that, then I don't know that we have to go down that road with impact fees.
In the statute, when they talk about off-site improvements, which is what you're talking about, it says they, they shall be limited to any necessary highway, drainage, and sewer and water upgrades pertinent to that development. So that would exclude things like schools or parks or.
I, I think school system.
Schools, in, if you read on, there is, there is a section in there about talking about schools.
For off-site exactions?
It would be our percentage of the region.
I'm just talking about off-site, not, not impact fees, but off-site exactions.
It's in there somewhere, what you actually can do with the schools. Because you can, if you had to add on to the school, or you had to, the school got to a certain size, you had to put an addition on the school, because this many kids were coming in, improve your septic system, because we still have septic fields, I believe, over there at the high school. So if you had to increase that, because they're only built for so many people, those are the kind of things you could use these for.
With impact fees, but I was just, no, I was just talking about off-site exactions, which is separate.
Okay, yeah.
Do you want page four oh eight?
Four oh nine.
We're on four oh eight. Starting with number five.
Yeah, which, which describes what impact fees do.
It includes public schools.
Right, impact fees do.
Yes, and they ask, and going down further, under C, sub, sub C, it has to be spent solely for those items.
Right, but if you go to J on the following page, if you fail to adopt an impact fee ordinance, which is what Scott was talking about, you know, we're, we're going along, you can still require developers to pay an exaction for the cost of off-site improvements determined by the planning board to be necessary.
Okay, I see where she is, yeah, yeah.
And that's, so that's a separate thing, that's what we've been doing quite a long, is what Scott was saying. But that is limited to highway, drainage, sewer, and water upgrades pertinent to that development.
Correct.
So it's not applicable to, say, you wanna put a new playground somewhere else in town, or, you know, more sort of general benefits. It's just kind of infrastructure that relates to that, and it's being built.
That's right. And Mike?
I think Stefan's actually done a lot of work on this, he's got quite a lot of us over there. But I think if you got that, that fee schedule for Lebanon, you put that in front of everybody. I just think that's kind of just an interesting thing to kind of see how people are actually using this, not promoting it, not figuring out what it's like. This is my actual example. As a former selectman, I can say, to Bob's, to Bob's point, is the one-time, you know, it's one-time injection. However, so is a grant. So I always believe that one-time money should be spent on one-time expenses. Communities run out of trouble when they get these one-time monies, and then they start, you, you've gotta be careful how you offset taxes and all the rest of that stuff, because then you kinda hit a date, and then all of a sudden you get this big bump that nobody saw coming, because, well, we've been, we've been living off the fat of the land. So it's really, it's really important, no matter how the planning board does this, I know you would, is talk to the planning, or talk to the SLCC, to see how they integrate these into the budget, so that it was a real benefit. Your point about the, the, the record keeping of it is really, really bang on, because it would be fun to listen to Teresa and just to see her and some of her people, and what they've been through as far as keeping track of this stuff. Because it's no small matter to keep track of money, and so I don't, I don't think people understand how hard Teresa and Lisa, and to even, a lesser extent, Kevin, work every day managing their money, making sure that all the forms and all the reporting. It's, it's an arduous, arduous task.
I'm sure it is, yeah. And right, does it add a fair amount more to it?
Stefan.
Care to enlighten us?
I do wanna do more research on it. I, because, is it, so, the population for Lebanon is about fifteen thousand. And even at that, I feel as though some of these fees are a little up there.
A little up?
I think they're a little up there.
Up down?
Because, see, for a single family, three twenty-four, and then at that square footage, it's like.
Three thousand square foot, how is it ten grand?
Of impact fees?
Yeah.
Yeah.
The building, the building permit's about fourteen hundred.
I guess it's more like six percent modest.
That's split up between schools, recreation, police.
Yeah, 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 the three sixty-four square foot or something.
Three twenty-four.
So if you're in the rural area district, and you just paid eighty grand for a building lot, and you haven't even done a driveway or a valve or a septic, and then you're gonna hedge ten grand plus a building permit.
Yeah, but we don't have to be unreasonable with our fees. If we did it, we could have more reasonable fees.
One hundred percent.
But reasonable fees have a way of becoming unreasonable over time.
Could, could institute a cap.
In a credit growth.
Yeah.
You have, it's something like reasonable if your neighbor has.
Keep it to the inflation rate. Or terms. Yeah, Stefan just brought up a good point. You could put a cap on those fees and link it to the inflation rate.
I was wondering about Lebanon. Did you talk with the people in Lebanon? And, and what I'm curious about is, how did they arrive at, how did they decide that they needed to have impact fees? What, what considerations did they go to?
That I'm unsure of. I did not talk to them. I talked to people at a planning conference, and I was just trying to source information about impact fees, and they just pointed me in that direction.
Do you know if the city of Keene has gone that route, anybody?
Actually, I did ask them before.
I, I could get some information. I know the chair of the planning board worked very well.
Nothing I'm aware of. I, I don't wanna think ill of like, of my neighbors and friends in Lebanon, but I could also see where they could, they could be viewed as sovereign.
Well, impact fees have been a way to control development throughout the years, that they've been allowed in, in New Hampshire here, or probably in other states as well, but it's been a way that towns have used to.
Control growth.
Development and growth of the town.
I'm sure Manover has.
Eh, probably, yeah, I don't know, probably.
On the flip side, I sent Stefan a link to Business Insider about Newport, New Hampshire, Jack Franks. And they were asking for ninety-six thousand for its forty-two units for water sewer connection fees. So we sued, and they settled for twenty-nine thousand.
Really?
Yes. And then Ruger Mill, which is up the street, I guess, was a hundred and sixty-four thousand initially, and they sold it for forty-nine thousand.
So they couldn't justify, they lost in court, because they couldn't justify where it was going, that they needed, they need for it. It's gotta be why they lost.
So, we're probably.
They're kinda making it on the spot is where they lost.
Again, yeah, you have to be able to justify your numbers. We charge such and such for start with.
And it needs to be equal for.
For everyone, across the board.
Establish a precedent, you're probably gonna stick with it, you know.
With that, impact fees though, do you have an ordinance?
Well, they were looking for an impact fee for water sewer, I don't know.
Okay, so could have been one of those off-site exactions.
That's another part of it, it's, it's extra work to do to justify the impact fee as well, and to keep it justified. And I'm sure it changes from year to year. I don't know if these guys adjust these rates from year to year or not, or they just keep them all the time, but it would seem to me you'd have to run them every single year to see where recreation was, where police was, where fire was, and their needs, and what they do have and don't have.
So, I talked to some of the people in the planning staff in Keene, and they said one of the major problems was the six-year limit on holding the money, which just makes it difficult for the municipality to spend the funds.
Well, there's a time limit, but it's put in there for the RSA, it's just so.
Yep.
Towns can't just grab the money and just hang on to it for the, kind of like the time.
No, it's gotta be spent in six years.
In two separate rulings, but the largest one was with the Atlanta, City of Atlanta National Association of Home Builders. Atlanta was using building permits basically as a profit center, and it made it to the Supreme Court. And the Supreme Court basically said, look, you can't be charged more than the top cost to operate the department-ish, you know, for that reason. And that's when, I mean, it's not when impact fees came by, but that's when people started going with the impact fee versus the building permit. And the specificity, because that was viewed as more reasonable, they were getting charged, they put it's for using it, it's not just to bring in general fund money, it's to bring in for specific purposes, which is a reasonable.
Yeah, if you can show where it's going, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, absolutely.
I, I would fall back on a cliche, but it seems like, if it ain't broke, why fix it? It seems like things have been working well. You know, and I don't know why we wanna institute impact fees that might scare off developers the minute they see that we charge impact fees. I'd rather, you know, like you said, work with who comes to town, and it seems like everybody's been pretty reasonable.
So far, they, to my recollection, they have, you know, we, we have our certain developers that aren't, as, you know, come across them sometimes.
Were you on for Ryan's gas tanks under Penn and Sawyer's crossing? Were you on the sport?
Yeah, I was, yeah.
So how did they, I don't know, they bought some hoes for the fire department, and they put in that.
Down on the river, they put the, dry, yeah, dry haven, if you guys call it, yeah, they put that in for the fire department, so. Yeah, so it's, it works.
Probably in the fifty, sixty thousand dollar range then, somewhere near.
I don't know, you're probably right. I don't know what it would have cost to do it.
Twenty-five years ago, maybe?
If that, or was that one of those?
Seems like a balancing act between what's the benefit to taking impact fees, but what are we losing to scare people off? Rather than if they just come to town and we work with them, there's more of a benefit, a long-term benefit, especially when it comes to taxes. If we can get more industry, more warehouses, I'm okay with that. I mean, they're not bringing kids to the school district. They're just paying property taxes.
That's right, one thing about the businesses.
And like I said again, if it's not broke, why fix it at this point, so.
We're doing with the SLCC, a few years ago, we, we did building permit fees, and we get them to try and get more in line with like communities issue, but mostly Keene, of course, and to make it, again, try to more reflect on the time it takes me to deal with certain things. So the business. So the business fees went down and the residential fees went up because it may be hard to believe, but somebody's twenty-by-twenty addition that they're doing on their own can be a lot more time-consuming than, say, a really large commercial project. So we now give them also credit if they have engineered stamp plans and third-party testing. Because if you have third-party testing, I'm going to get all that third-party testing. So it takes a lot of the pressure off of me being there looking at everything because they already paid tens of thousands of dollars for somebody else to do that, to get that, that information. And the residential went up. So, you know, we've been watching these a long time and trying to keep them as equitable as possible as it relates to the time that's required by the building department, which I think is, you know, it's not perfect, but.
Yeah, that's what it's all about though, right? Got to cover your expenses.
Right.
And the location.
Okay, sorry.
It sounds, it sounds as though you've been able to work with developers to provide necessary additional infrastructure like sidewalks or road improvements or things like that so far. As long as that goes on, then, then that seems to be the way to go for all the reasons that Bob said, that you develop a relationship with the developer and so on. What happens if somebody just, you know, wants to put something on a roadway where there's not enough, you know, pavement health to handle the traffic or whatever, and they refuse because it may be a huge cost to them to improve the road? You have no option.
Yeah, we do. We can deny it.
You can deny it?
On those grounds.
Okay, well, that's what I was going to ask you, whether you would deny something like that for those grounds?
If it was, yeah, if it was clearly going to be a large expense of the town or something like that, I think the planning board probably would. I can't speak for the rest of them.
Have we truly denied? I thought, I thought it was like the town's obligation to provide functional infrastructure.
It depends on the circumstances. It's case by case. But if, talking about cases, if the town has a case or the planning board has a case that this road cannot handle that kind of traffic and unless it's brought up to specs, the building, I mean, the building project which is going at the end of the road will say, won't work, then the planning board can deny it on those and they can, they can go to the courts and.
So so long as the road is of sufficient quality to handle what's already happening, then you have no obligation to bring it up to the next level where that M-God would require?
And it doesn't have to be a road. You know, if it were, we'll say, the sewer system down here. If the town could prove that the sewer system is basically at capacity with, we'll say, records from the plant, so on, you know, all that type of stuff, then the planning board could deny on that too. They may lose in court, may not lose in court. Depends on what the records and stuff look like. Mike?
I think Scott's point is, is the most, is really important then, because I understand what you're saying, Dr. Teresa, and I don't think you're wrong either. So Al's planning board got in a lot of trouble. Selter wants to come to town. A couple of the members of the planning board suggested that maybe if the police were to put a repeater up there, they'd be more likely to vote for it. That's extortion.
Yeah, but I think you're talking about.
Right, well, I'm just saying that that was versus the necessity of the road, they can't handle the traffic or septic or sewer system, they can't handle the flow versus just extortion.
Yeah, I don't think anybody's talking about extortion.
No, 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 but, but I'm just saying that you've got to be careful of that stuff. Because, well, like Flat East Project, for example, if they said, no, we're not going to give you money for that, we might have had it in our mind. Because it would have been tough, that's a tough one.
Yeah, it would have been a tough thing.
And Roxbury's going for Middletown Road, right? Aren't they in court now or?
I don't know.
A developer wants to put something, some large development.
Yeah, developer Middletown.
And Middletown Road is not a good road for development, so Roxbury said no.
I think, I think they prevailed too. I'm pretty sure.
It's a good favor of the developer.
So what I was trying to, you know, I'm not sure this works because it might be extortion. But what if you had the sort of talk to the developer, try to get them to help out with the things that need to be done to make the project work? And you also had impact fees? You said, look, you know, let's work together to get this done, but if you don't, we may have to, because of our needs as a town, impose an impact fee.
I think it has to be one or the other.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah. Just throw that out of the way. Sounds more like extortion to me.
It'd be one or the other.
It has to be the worst.
So you can't have the ability to charge impact fees and not charge impact fees if you can work out.
Well, it'd be that the board would have to waive the impact fees and have, when the applicant says, well, we'll do this on our own, okay, your fees are waived.
That's what I was going to say. With the location, if we have something like Webb, it's on a state highway, they have their own water, their own septic system, they have no kids going through the school, how can we charge them an impact fee?
Like it just wants to.
Right.
Why would we want to? That's true on that, yeah.
So slightly, could you almost do it like you were with the pilot?
Right.
So you have the impact fees, but then you have the pilot system to believe the impact fee.
Right, we have to, by statute, we have to offer a waiver option. That has to be part of the package.
So you still got to get a six-year.
Yeah, still have that, yeah. And the, as far as a state road goes, I don't believe the impact fees can go to the state highways.
No, it can't.
Has to be town stuff.
Has to be town stuff. That and interstate to handle money, the one of them.
So, I don't know. I like to leave well on the phone as well.
I don't feel like, you know, I could really make a case for it. And I think we've had this situation something comparable in the past where, for example, oh, I know, the housing right here in West, right? Where there really wasn't much space for recreational facilities for children. And I know they did a little something, but had we had impact fees at that time, we could have said, you know, and if, or a different developer, but. We could have required that money be put into, you know, say, recreational facilities off-site but close by that would.
Well, the impact fee would be for the town to do that.
Right.
Not necessarily the developer to.
Right, but we could have gotten the money that would have enabled the town to increase the recreational opportunities for, you know, a big increase in population beyond children, who didn't have any place to go and play. That's a theoretical argument.
Yeah, that's what they're used for.
But we don't seem to have that kind of question. There's no children. Yeah, yeah, it might.
What else? Impacts, impact fees.
Well, I just brought this up because I thought it merited the discussion.
Yeah, and throughout the years, we've discussed it on the board and that issue.
And from time to time, we'll have to bring it up just to see where we're at.
I think it might be really useful, but once you get a discussion, you.
Sometimes not. Thank you.
You're welcome.
But I can still pursue it and look to see how it's addressed in other towns to give us some more information on it.
I could definitely talk to OPD and then I believe when you're looking at impact fees before they're implemented, the first thing you do is like a community needs and facilities study?
Oh.
Yeah.
Really, on.
Even if you have a capital improvements program?
Yeah, really.
I believe so. It's like a feasibility, you know, cover your butt.
All right. Well, nothing more on the impact fees?
Our estimate for replacing most of the main water, so to speak, on main roads in North Swansea is five point seven million dollars. We have been doing impact fees, we're going to keep doing them, but hopefully we'll get some work done.
Let's see, how about the extension up Route thirty-two where the fire station is?
If the fire station goes through, it's a hundred million thousand.
That's what that would cost.
And then maybe the developer next door with the thirty-two units might get in on it.
I would think he would want to get in on that, yeah. Unless he's already.
Well, he has all slating, I think.
Yeah, we haven't dealt with that yet.
But Webb got fifty gallons a minute, I guess.
What's that?
Webb got fifty gallons a minute.
I'm not surprised there.
Yeah, I'm not surprised there.
But then the site, the site super was, was all kinds of bummed out a lot of ways because he's like, as soon as they hear how much water there is, they're going to want to add so much to the show. Because everything works there, sure.
Okay, let's talk about our site plan, the regulations. And this has to do with what we talked about with senior housing development over here. The one that we, we're talking about our last meeting that we gave them an approval and then they came in for a compliance hearing and that was, I think, other things were approved on that meeting there. And it has to do with their yearly, I mean, the one-year limit on the approval. So we need to tweak something in our regulations just to confirm how that all works. And we missed it the last time. So, and it's not very much. So in this site plan regulation, you go to page thirteen. Actually, page twelve, but conditional approval on page twelve. So let's, you know, go to page eleven, twelve, the site plan reg.
Running late.
That's all right. If this is a small matter, you know, we're just discussing it. We can't do anything, we have to have a public hearing on it, but we need to discuss it to see what we're going to do. If we all decide what we want to do, next meeting we can have a public hearing on it and then when that goes through, then we can change the regulations.
Okay, going back to Jane's question. Referring to the minutes where we said that we're going to get legal consultation on this. Is this what we're going, is this going to be involving that?
We usually run this by legal. And we had them, when we redid our regulations, like the last year, we ran them through legal.
Okay, from what I understand, we did get something back from legal, did we not?
For the board.
For what?
For the board.
Meaning what? This is the board?
This is, this is more than the board.
It's not for a public hearing?
Yeah.
I mean, public sentiment? Okay, well. Anyway, so let's, let's discuss this. Page eleven, page twelve. On page eleven, the approval starts, you know, it talks about the approval, was the old section ten. And, and then we go on to page twelve and it said under C. And that would say, site plan approval will be valid for one year after the date upon which the board voted to approve, provided that and blah, 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 blah. But the important thing is that when the board votes to approve a site plan, that's when that clock starts. It's not when the chairman signs it or it becomes final as in the RSAs, after conditions have been met or something like that, they talk about final approval. The approval is made when a motion is made and the motion is passed on the affirmative and that the site plan has gone through. That's when that one-year clock starts.
Okay, question. All right, so we vote to approve, but we vote to approve conditional upon blah, blah, blah.
Yeah.
So it's that initial vote to approve?
That's what it is, but we have to, we have to tweak that in our regulations because if we go to page thirteen, when we talk about conditional approval, we have very top there, let's see, it says, on item B, it says, if a conditional approval has been granted pursuant to number six A in this section, which is on the other page, the conditions need to be met within one year or the approval is null and void and the applicant must resubmit the application. So I think in there, we should, well, let's go to the next paragraph, paragraph C. It says, if the conditions are met within the one-year timeframe, the approval becomes final without further public hearing and the applicant has one year from that date to demonstrate active and substantial development as defined in Approval Six C on the next page. I think we should take that paragraph out completely. We don't need it in there at all.
You're talking about C?
Yeah, talking about taking C out because, again, it's ambiguous as to when the time limit runs out there. So if we take C out and add this into item B, and I'm going to go up to B again, paragraph B, if a conditional approval has been granted pursuant to six A in this section, the conditions need to be met within one year and then add in after the date upon which the board voted to approve, which is, we have on the prior page.
Original, true.
Original approval date. It's still, even, even though they met the conditions, it still has from that date of the approval. Let's see, so, no, and it tells them that if they didn't make the conditions within that one year of approval, then it's null and void automatically, no matter what, no extensions, nothing at all, just null and void automatically to have that in there. So that lets it set in there that from the date of approval, which is what we say under C, they have that one year to do the substantial development of the property or active substantial development. And they can also ask for a one-year extension if they apply within thirty days of that one running out from that date when it's approved, not when the chairman signs it.
That's much more clear.
I, I, no, I wanted, what am I going to say? It's going to get into something that we can't talk about right now.
I don't see why we can't talk about it. What's the problem? I mean, you know, we're talking about something that's already been approved, right? We approved it over there. We aren't talking about anything that, I don't know, that the public shouldn't be aware of. It's a public meeting, you know, we're a public board, this is the town, it's everybody's town. Unless it's something that you think. We're talking about the, the approval over to the senior housing over by the airport.
Correct.
And we're talking about whether or not their one year is running out at this date.
Has run out.
Or has run out this date or that day. But if you read our site plan regs, they have not run out. I mean, where, where in here do you think that they have run out? It's because of the initial approval, right?
Right, that's what you, that's what you're, you're, you just said.
Yeah, I did, but in our regulations, it says, if the conditions are met, this is the one we're taking out. It says, in our current regulations, if the conditions are met within one-year timeframe, which they met the conditions at that hearing.
Not all the conditions. They have not met all the conditions.
They haven't yet, okay.
To my, to my knowledge, they have not met all their conditions yet.
So if we leave C in there, then they even get more of an extension.
Yeah, no, I'm not saying you can't take that out, but what you're, what you're just asking or saying or stating is that, that within that one-year period, they have met their conditions, but.
And their conditions they haven't met is, is that they have not presented the updated drawings of the landscaping and the parking. That's what you're talking about?
That plus other conditions, the deed restriction.
Okay, those, those conditions, yeah, they are administrative.
I know, but still, it is a condition that was put on.
Yep.
The initial approval.
And if those conditions aren't met, they do not get a C out. They can still go with the project, but we're getting beyond ourselves there.
I want to correct that for a second.
Go ahead.
They don't get a building permit.
Oh, they don't even get the building permit?
No.
Oh, oh, I didn't know that.
I can't possibly wait for somebody to build a hundred million dollar project, get it done and then go, oh, I'm sorry, I still missing out the A letter.
Okay, thank you.
They don't get a permit.
Thank you. Okay, that clarifies a little bit more. But let's get back down to that paragraph C. This is what we're talking about now. We're, you're thinking that, that they've run out of time for their one-year conditional approval. So, and I'm saying they haven't because of what we have in our regulations. And again, if the conditions are met within one year, so you say they haven't met the conditions. So they haven't met the conditions yet. That is, what was it, the, was it July second or something like that?
That was.
Meeting, wasn't it?
Yeah.
It was that meeting there. They were still waiting on stuff that was decided at that meeting there.
We allowed them to change.
The parking.
Two items.
Yeah, two things were changed. But it wasn't there at that meeting. No, I read the minutes there.
But at that July meeting, they would have met everything that we asked them to. That's, that's why they were coming back.
No, because you still had the administrative conditions that they have not met.
But as far as us, we were concerned at that meeting, if we never gave them that twenty percent reduction and then the putting in more trees or whatever the hell it was, that they would have been all approved.
That was.
Because they had everything.
That was one of the conditions. That was the compliance part of the conditions that we listed. Okay, so that's only one part of what we asked for.
But that was the, that part you're talking about there was for the compliance hearing because the rest of the conditions were administrative and they did not require a compliance hearing. And as far as I know, the rest of those conditions, which are permits, they had met. They had those permits at that compliance hearing, I think from the minutes. I'm looking for, I guess I don't have the minutes and stuff here from that.
We know that they have the FAA approval. Mike?
They don't let me just know, and that's not aware of. They just don't know the property yet, so.
Right, so, now.
You know, I hear them closed on it, yeah.
So, they can't, they're not in the, the conditions.
So I feel like we're talking, we're doing the same thing that we did at our last meeting, which just banged my brain. So I'm wondering, we did get an approval and immunity from legal and you have that, but you can't discuss that in a public meeting?
And that opinion, I'm not going to ask you to ask, say.